Clerk, would you please call the role of Mr. Duval?
President.
Good afternoon.
Here.
Mr. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
President.
Hi.
Here.
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 Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I hope you all are well. We had a long Public Safety Committee meeting, so thank you all for allowing that to wrap up. We're going to start here Benjamin with the invocation if you choose. I hope Reverend McDowd, you still have the energy to deliver.
I'm pretty in turn of it. Pretty, Howard.
Why?
Father God, thank you for allowing us to join here today to do the work of the people of Columbia. We do believe in this city that justice is indeed the queen of virtues. We seek every single day to do right by all the people that make this city great. We ask that you give us wisdom and patience, that you inspire a spirit of collegiality, and that we are proud with the work we do here today. In his name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mayor. We will start with any questions that you all may have regarding our financial report of November 2017. You should have a corrected, unedited version of your parking summary extra paper.
Hey, Jan.
And it's Ms. Alonso's birthday, so we do all have her very happy birthday on today.
I've been seeing.
As she answers financial questions.
Jan, it's my daughter's birthday too, who I was just trying to call that I missed during her lunch period.
She's got a great day.
Two things, Jan. Give us an update on the audit. Are we gonna ever see the numbers from last year?
We're gonna do that later. We're gonna deal with that later.
Yeah, we'll talk about it a little bit later today as well, just a preliminary discussion and then, because I wanted to have a little bit of a discussion with you all prior to me going out. And then on the first meeting in March, or the second meeting in March. First meeting in March, Bud will be here to brief you all.
Okay.
So we'll talk with you a little bit later.
The second question is a general question. It is frustrating to me that here we are in the last meeting in February and we're looking at November financials. I know that you look at the things as they come in in real time, so you have a better feel for if we are on track or behind track or ahead of track. Could you give us your professional opinion, do we need to be worried about coming out in this fiscal year in the green?
Well, I wouldn't make any projections for how we're gonna end up in June and February, but it looks, they all look good.
Look good.
So far. Jeff and I were having a conversation about the taxes coming in a little ahead of last year, but there's some taxes that play into that, so.
Hands, Michael.
Is your microphone on? Okay, just wanna make sure.
So, so far, so good.
On the revenue side, are you seeing any increases as a result of all of the activities we've seen in the last three or four years? Are they hitting the tax rolls now, student housing being one?
That's part of what we're looking to get at. Jeff sent an email over to the Treasurer's Office in Richland County to see what they were thinking because they were up year-to-date from last year. So whether it was assessments, or whether it was people were paying quicker because of the new tax laws, we're gonna see what, we're gonna see what the Treasurer has to say about that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other questions with Jan? All right. Thank you.
Our first City Council discussion item will be a presentation, and this will be our initial water and sewer rate study presentation. Obviously, much more to come as we proceed through the budget process. But Mr. Robert Chambers, Financial and Utility Management Consultant for Black and Beach Management Consulting, and his colleague are here to take you through some initial dots for the water and sewer rate study. Jeff, I'm sorry.
You're fine, you're fine. I just wanted to introduce myself. I've not met a lot of you folks. I'm Jeff Wells. I work with Black and Beach, and I'm the Client Director for the City of Columbia. So my job to make sure that the work Robert and others that are working with the city goes the way it needs to go. And I just wanted to say thank you. This, we know this is an important part of your financial planning, and we are very honored that you choose us to do this work. So that's all I wanted to say, and Robert will get on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Good afternoon. Again, thank you all very much for allowing us the opportunity and privilege.
Welcome back, Mr. Chambers. Welcome here. Thank you.
It was always bad when we had to see Robert.
I promise, no bad news today. For the last few years, we've been, you know, going through the process of looking at rates, and you know, you all around this table have been willing to take action to do what you have to do, you know, to keep and maintain the service you provide, water and sewer service. Today, what we'd like to do as a part of the overview is just take a look at where we're coming from. How did we get here? And then talk about what our plan looks like going forward, and then kind of relate that to how others of similar nature within the industry, other utilities per se, are dealing with some of the same problems you are dealing with. So as a part of the agenda, we look at your drivers, look at the industry, have a slide about integrated financial planning, and then talk about the approach we'll undertake. As is always the case, it's an open forum, so please stop me as you see fit. So drivers. As it relates to financial planning and integrated financial planning, we view financial planning not just as looking at your costs and the revenues you require, but in the bigger perspective of financial planning, you need to understand how it affects your business, how you achieve business excellence, how you become and stay resilient as a utility, how it impacts the customers you serve. So in the prism of integrated financial planning, we'll be touching on a few of these aspects as it relates to your greater system. Specific to your drivers as a utility, you're experiencing increased demand for the services you provide. You have a diverse and informed customer base, and you want to go about sustainably, as you are, implementing your capital and operating programs. And when we say sustainably, we mean making sure you have the right resources and appropriate resources as it relates to people, technology, processes, and all the infrastructure. Not just backbone, but back office infrastructure you require to provide these services. So that's a driver.
It's very much the driver, because at the end of the day, we don't want to get back to where we were before, which is working our way backwards unfortunately instead of forwards.
Yes, sir. It is. And we'll have some slides that talk about as we go on. And then why we're here, maintaining revenue stability and maintaining the financial metrics, we've put forth for ourselves to, you know, be a financially sustainable operation. And then how this impact the customers we're here to serve. You know, how do we engage our customers and provide the best service at the lowest possible cost? So all of these become competing drivers. So how do we get here? As a city, based on information provided in your CAFR, you're adding about a half a percent of customers per year, and this is for the period FYO 13 through 17. Specific to your connections, you're adding about a percent per year of water, new water connections, but you know, you lost just under two and a half percent per year on the wastewater side. That's because, as I understand, you sold a part, a portion of your system, and that has some implications as it relates to revenues, and you'll see how it looks historically.
Now, when you say that, because we did sell those customers, we get those taps back. Those taps today are worth five times what they were before, so we need to calculate those values a little bit.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay, we'll.
What do you mean, we get the taps back?
So when we sell a system, so we sold off the customer base, and you know, if we did it for somewhere else, we would get all of those taps back.
We got the capacity.
The capacity back, so we can sell those taps again. And the value of those taps went from 200 to like $2,200. So the value is way much more than it is now, both from a short-term cash but long-term capacity value.
Yeah, so.
You're assuming that the wastewater system was capacity.
I'm not. It doesn't matter, there's still value because of the, just the mere cost of it is eight times what it was before.
Yeah, so, so the only thing is saying is, you had a certain amount of capacity that you utilize to serve customers at this point in time. No, these customers are not on the system, you're not using that capacity to serve them. So now, when a new customer needs to buy into the system, that capacity is available, and given cost escalation, it should be worth more today than it was at that time. In short. Employees, we looked at your utilities and engineering, specific to the water and sewer system, and we see that we, on average, it's growing at about a percent, over a percent per year. In 14, you know, we lost some employees, and that was because, as I understand, there was a shift out of this department for some customer care, if I'm not mistaken, employees. But as you can tell, at the beginning of 17, you started to rehire, got that group back in, and you're making, you know, the efforts and taking the steps to hire as you need within the organization.
You just keep hiring Travis and crew, and we'll be, we'll be just fine.
Those guys are amazing.
So looking at your financials, the ultimate goal here of your financials is to produce enough revenues in its simplest form to meet your requirements and to meet your financial metrics, one of which is line seven debt service coverage. You see that your revenues is growing from 121.9 in 13 to about 144, and you see here, and we touched upon it in 14, you had a little dip in revenues as a result of, you know, moving some of those customers or something. So ultimately, you've taken the steps and taken the action to make sure you have the revenues you require to operate the system and to meet your financial metrics, one of which is debt service coverage. Now, you did take the action. The goal here as it relates to rate increases and revenue increases is to have consistent and steady increases as compared to lumps in how you increase rates. In 13, you had adjustments that averaged about eight percent per bill. In 14, you had an increase in volumetric rates that was about eight percent. In 15, there's a request for 7.9, but it wasn't granted, so there is no increase. In 16, there's a 9.5. In 17, there wasn't an increase. In 18, there's a 4.75. This is positive, this is good, because as an organization, you have taken action and showed the willingness to take action to make sure your revenues are stable and you have the infrastructure and services you need to serve the customers that are connected to the system.
Periodic zero increases may increase larger, more impact on one town.
In the future, that's correct, yes, ma'am. Okay, so final slide of how did we get here? At the end of our study last year, we showed the plan, and we approved a 4.75 percent increase in 18, which is highlighted in blue. And the plan to finance our obligations, our capital requirements, and other requirements required additional rate increases in the outer years. As a part of the exercise of what we'll do this time around, we'll go about reassessing how we have done thus far, and you know, looking, taking a good deep look at these increases. And when we come back, we'll have a better understanding of if it's really still a 13 percent, or if it's lower, et cetera, et cetera. Okay? Any questions before we go on?
When do you think you'll have that for us?
So, the plan is to come back in April, so let's say six weeks, thereabouts.
So we'll be able to have it for future impacts.
Yes, sir.
As we talk about budget.
Yes, sir. So looking at the industry, now we, we understand the road we've taken, what are others in the industry dealing with? We spoke about infrastructure, and that infrastructure is the basis of everything we do, and I agree. Every year, Black and Beach produces a Water Industry Report where we look at about 400 utilities, we provide them with a survey, and we try to track and understand the key operating trends and paradigms that they're facing within the industry. For the FYO 17 survey, there's a strong focus on sustainability, there's a strong focus on resilient, how resilient you can be as a utility. And in my opinion, resilient means how well are you able to respond or maintain or sustain your service as a result of an unforeseen event, whether it's operating, financial, however you view being able to stand up and keep going. So one of the, one of the questions we asked, we provided utilities as a part of the survey with a list of challenges. Aging infrastructure, managing operating costs, how resilient you are. And we said, based on all of these challenges, how do you rate these challenges as being important, very important, or not so important? And aging infrastructure became, was at the top of the list. Of over 95 percent of the utility surveys said aging infrastructure was very important or important period. Next after aging infrastructure was managing operating costs, system resilience, managing capital costs. So it comes back to the infrastructure discussion, the infrastructure question. Now, the next slide will go into a little more detail as it relates to generally what that means. This question says, to what extent did a few of these items, capital cost, operating cost, increasing system risk, environment and regulatory, how did aging infrastructure impact these items? Right at the top of the list is capital cost. Why is that? If a main or pipe breaks, that's gonna be an impact on your capital plan. Crews are going to have to go out and fix it, which then becomes an impact on your operating costs. And that provides a certain amount of risk on the system. And for one, that was an unbudgeted emergency. So other utilities are dealing with the same issues around infrastructure, around aging assets, and it has an impact, as you said, on your capital plan. It has an impact on how you operate your system. So this just provides a perspective to say, you know, most utilities are experiencing very similar and complex issues.
I think we're leading the way in number four.
In number four? Okay. What's that? Unbudgeted emergency?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. A water main break.
Water main breaks. We've had a rough winter.
Everybody's had one.
Yeah. So, so moving on, this question was, you know, what is the level of understanding about rates within your system? What is the level of understanding amongst customers and stakeholders you serve? Okay? We, there are, the questions were asked, do they really understand what you're trying to do and why you have to increase rates? About 34.6 percent said they understand the need for rates and accept that rates need to go up. About 47 percent said, we understand that there's a need for rate increases, but we don't want rates to go up. So what that says is, the majority of the 400 utilities that were surveyed said their customer base understands the need for a rate increase. But they're almost split down the middle with regard to, should we have one or should we not have one?
That's 400 out of how many? I'm just trying to understand the perspective of.
That's about 400 utilities.
Right.
Oh.
How many utilities?
About 195, 194.
Something like that.
Something thereabouts.
Just curious.
But, but bigger number is the combination of both, which is, what's that? About 82, 83 percent, which is 350 or somewhere thereabouts, that said, we need, we know there's a need. And so, the next question became, how do you communicate with your base? How do you, you know, how do you outreach and communicate with the public, with your stakeholders? 87 percent of the utilities surveyed said they use the utility website. 70 percent said they utilize print campaigns. 61 percent said they did social media. 47.4 said they did, you know, local media outlets. So basically, the three most utilized sources of communication are sources which you currently utilize. The next question was, what matters that the utility uses to address the rate conundrum? The rate conundrum is, we understand that there's a need for rate increase. We've listened to you and know in our homes we're conserving, but we're conserving, and as we conserve, rates will go up. Why is that the case? So the question is, it's how do you deal with that as a utility? And it's all around education, continuing to engage with your customer base, being timely with regard to providing the information about the need and outreach into them. Secondly, also trying to utilize tools within your rate and pricing mechanism to reward good positive behaviors, efficient usage of water, and you're doing those things currently. So integrated financial planning. Integrated financial planning historically was a single-source objective. It was an exercise whereby you make sure you have sufficient revenues to meet your revenue requirements or to meet your costs. That is no longer the case in today's market, in today's industry. You have competing variables, infrastructure, equities, financial markets, the customer experience, sustainability, and there are questions around these components. For example, infrastructure, how do you support innovative capital financing? How do you make sure you get the most bang out of every dollar, you know, you earn and you spend within your system? How do you engage your customer base so that they're satisfied and happy with the service you're providing when they turn on the tap? And when they pick up the phone and call customer service? How do you make sure there's a nexus between the cost of providing that service and how you price that service? And more importantly, how do you implement sustainable business practices to achieve operational excellence? As a whole, holistically, all these variables impact the money you collect, the money you spend, and how you operate your utility financially, and it cannot be taken into a vacuum. They all have to be looked at and understood. So the point here is, financially, the integrated financial paradigm is not just looking at your costs, but having a feel for how all the other components within your system are affected by, you know, the financing and your cost to operate.
The customer class equity.
Yes, sir.
Tell me a little bit about that.
Okay, so what that means is, each customer class on your system places a certain demand on your system. Okay? So residential customers are the class, you have more showers in the morning and in the evening. Industrial has a stable and efficient, for example, usage, and there's a certain demand they place on the system. Okay? As a result of that demand, you have to charge them for that service. You have to charge them for the demand they place. So the equities state, what it costs you as a utility to serve that customer, you should be charging costs, you should be charging the utility customer in a similar manner. So if it costs you $10, for example, you should be charging them somewhere close to that cost so that everybody has an equal setting on the system based on the demand each customer class places on the system. So that becomes the equity. Everybody has a responsibility, they're equitable within the system. And that's a part of what we do in the cost of service component of the study.
So everybody is treated the same.
That, that, that's all.
That's intent.
That's the goal, that's the goal and intent.
Everybody in the first class.
Yes, and it becomes then a balance of, everybody may not get to 100 percent, but the goal is to initiate the process to get there in a balanced form. So going to our project approach, so a few items that we are considering as a part of looking at this next study that's coming up. Looking at revenues, there's a loss of Ni America, we're looking at customer growth, what customer growth will do. You know, again, coming back to the capital program, you have a few, a few big products that are about to come online potentially. You have the AMI project, you have the Crane Creek Storage Project, but that one, you all are looking at it, so we'll see what happens therein. You also have potentially a new bulk-use customer, a large industry, significant service requirement, and we'll be looking at some kind of a pricing mechanism around the service and how you charge that customer for the service they require. So that will be a part of this study. Okay? We'll also look at impact fees. An impact fee just represents a new customer's buy-in to the system. I mean, what, impact fees? So every new.
Oh, you're talking just the impact to the system?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And what they have to pay.
Charging somebody.
Yes. And then maintenance of your financial metrics and looking at all of these things and making sure you need all the metrics at the lowest possible cost to the customer. So all of these items will be reviewed as we go forward this quarter round. Any questions here? Before we go on? Teresa?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, this is a three-step process where, and I know someone who we've seen this before, but it's a three-step process where we look at your financials to determine how much revenues you're earning and how much costs. Then we perform a cost of service study to say who should pay based on the demand they place on the system. And the third step says, how should we price that service? So that comes up to be your rates. What should your rates look like? This is another dimension of this approach, and I'm not going to get into this in detail, but all this says it's a rigorous and methodical approach. You know, that's, you know, dependable and transparent. Okay, so another component to this study is the impact fees. What is an impact fee? Our definition is, an impact fee is a contribution, or let's say, a system buy-in from a new customer solely for the construction and development of water and wastewater facility. So it's that new customer's buy into the system based on that new customer's demand requirement.
And you get a free toaster, right?
Aye. Rational nexus. This is a fundamental principle that says there should be a relationship between the nature of the service required and the cost to provide that service. So this comes back to that actually question. The nature of cost to provide the service and the revenues you collect from the service should align. There are three approaches to doing impact fees. You have the buying approach whereby you have current investment in a system that's been placed and been fixed by existing customers, and new customers have to buy into that investment. The second approach is the incremental investment whereby you have a new development, a new set of costs, new capacity, and that customer which will gain from that new capacity, that new cost, will have to buy into that new capacity and new cost. And then you have the combined approach that says, you have existing capacity and you have new capacity. Let's put them together, and if I'm putting together, we price it and the customer buys into the system. So that's the three general approaches. Typically, the combined system approach is utilized because you have mature systems that keep adding capacity and the cost to serve that new capacity. So the impact fees, the steps, we'll go through assessing your existing system, looking at the investment in the existing system, determining the capacity associated with that investment, and then looking at new projects that may come onto the system to support your existing system. Then we look at what we call a capacity standard, and all that says is, what is the typical usage requirement for the customers you serve? Okay? So you have the total cost of the system, the total capacity. Cost divided by capacity gives you a unit. You have the typical requirement of the customer, you put them together, and you get the maximum allowable fee. So that's, in short, the process we utilize to determine the impact. Currently, you have plant expansion fees. You do not have one for water service, and we'll be establishing one for water service as a part of this study. For sewer service, the purpose is to offset your. For sewer service, the the purpose is to offset your treatment and collection system costs, and it's currently about two thousand six hundred and forty. For example, for example, you charge for, you charge your current impact fees based on the TAP, as you highlighted, and for example, a residential customer would be considered having one TAP. A single-family mobile, one TAP, a multifamily unit, one TAP. A hotel, for example, will have one TAP for the general administration, and then for every room, a TAP is assessed. Uh, for day schools, one TAP, and then for every twenty individuals within the school, there's a TAP. So that's the current basis that you utilize to charge for, you know, your expansion fees. Questions?
One TAP fee?
Yes, sir. That you pay upon, after you've registered in the service, you pay it as a part of your application.
But what's a day?
It's expensive to build in the city.
And that's it. Thank you for your recommendations and information. No problem. You have, you have questions for Robert, guys?
No, the proof's in the pudding when he delivers it.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you, Robert. Any other questions?
Or what?
Any other? Sorry.
No, no more questions.
Our next item is the council approval of requests, um, which will actually occur this evening, your actual vote and motion on approving the request. But I know you all need to have a discussion for funding from the hospitality tax fund surplus monies and to amend the fiscal year two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen hospitality tax budget. And so we are carrying over this discussion from the last council meeting where, um, yes, ma'am, I think DeeDee has copies for you all for everything, and she is coming with those. Um, so we updated the memo from last time to reflect any, um, action you took last council meeting. And then DeeDee's also put together the additional requests that have come in. And so we wanted to make sure y'all had the opportunity to see all of that kind of in one place.
And I apologize, I was supposed to send you guys something and I I didn't.
Okay.
But I I want to put that on the table for discussion.
Certainly. And so we didn't take any liberty, we didn't change anything, we just figured you all needed to look at what's before you and make, um, adjustments or suggestions. And I know Mr. Duval also had a proposal he shared with you all that this would be the time to.
Before we do that, so we had the list before us.
Where's the other list?
This is where's the original?
So is this one we had last week? Yeah, so what is, so what is this? Since then? Okay.
Um, when is the committee meeting? When does it meet?
No.
Things are in March, they have to come in in March.
That's for next year.
Yeah.
Their applications are available now for next funding year.
All right. What about thi-this year?
They're not meeting yet, they've already met. So this is, this is additional.
This year.
How much? How much is left in whatever is considered?
Six hundred and forty-three.
So if the.
Six forty-three.
Based off what we presented to you all last week, it was six hundred and forty-three thousand. There was seven hundred and eighty thousand available, so I had tried to leave a balance there for a multitude of reasons. But I also knew that there were some additional requests that different folks had mentioned to me. So there's a a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. If if you were to approve everything that was originally on the table that we gave you last meeting, that would leave a balance of.
Do we have? Do we have available, DeeDee, maybe you can provide, what it the groups are all getting now that are asking for additional clean and safety? You know, I I I'm I'm struggling with the request, one of the requests, and now we're getting another request, you know. Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm looking, well, first of all, I'm looking at the city center partnership. The reason that we did a bid was to allow them to fund these types of programs. And, you know, I feel like every time I turn around, they're asking us for an additional amount of money to to cover the program that they they put in. They've got seven hundred thousand dollars in the bank. You know, they're, if you look at their ten ninety-nine, you may wonder nine ninety, excuse me, ten ninety-nine is what I get, but nine nine ninety, I mean, if you look at, I'm just, I'm struggling, everybody keeps coming here, but yet they all have funding.
We currently have three groups that do the clean and safe, and then two of those are neighborhood groups, um, Five Points and the Vista. And what the committee decided to do, um, for seventeen eighteen was combine their request for clean and safe along with their request for their regular funding that they received.
So how much did they each get out of those three groups in in this this budget that's currently, that they're being funded currently now?
I don't have those right in front of me.
Let's see the two fifty or two sixty for the Vista.
For city center partnership, it was two hundred and sixty thousand. For the Congry Vista Guild, it was two hundred and sixty thousand, and that was for both their clean and safe and their regular funding. Um, Five Points was two hundred and twenty-nine thousand for clean and safe and their regular association.
That's what they got.
That's not their request, that's what they received.
That's 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 not clean and safe, that's overall.
That's overall for Five Points and the Vista. Clean and, uh, city center partnership was specifically for that, for their amount.
Okay, let's go, Mr. Duval.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I think that we've made a commitment to Vista Guild for clean and safe, but I I think we need to think seriously about not funding any of their other requests and take that leftover money, which has now been reduced by a hundred and twenty thousand, so it'd be about five hundred and twenty thousand, and put it, put that into the committee process for next year. Last year, we had two hundred and thirty thousand to carry forward as surplus, and and the committee used that.
Howard, I, I I think that's a, that may be reasonable, but if we're in a position where we've got dollars that we can shift and set aside for another period, I'd rather we take a look at some of those other organizations that are traditionally out there, again, that don't get nothing. That's number one. Number two, um, I'd like to see the budget for, uh, uh, Five Points and the Vista.
What about the city center?
City Center.
Uh, and city center, that's fine.
All three of them, if you don't ask, let's do it, let's lay them all on.
But there's no need. Listen, Mr. Devine and Mr. McDonald.
Well, just a question, since we're on clean and safe, and I just want to be clear on on DeeDee, the new memo you gave us.
Yes, ma'am.
This for Five Points, additional for clean and safe?
Yes.
You said they got two twenty, so basically they want this two, an additional two twenty-five for this current fiscal year? Or is that what they're asking for for next?
That was, um, what they were short for in this year, and I just included that because it was in the memo that was attached. Um, the main thing they were requesting funding for was the food and wine festival.
Right, and I know they called about that, so, but for, so they were initially at, they initially asked for fifty for clean and safe?
Asking for new money.
Let's see.
That's new money. That's on top of.
The top of for this current fiscal year.
That's my understanding.
So.
To, for now, now until July.
Uh, that's my understanding, I'm, I'm, please someone correct me. Do you get Ed's question first than Daniel?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm. Daniel?
I I just was curious, when we, maybe I misunderstood, but when we committed for clean and safe for the Vista, it was for the next fiscal year.
I think they were asking for the, I know they were asking.
Did I misunderstand? I thought that was that they wanted to ensure that we added that on the next fiscal year.
And the other was eighteen nineteen too.
Yeah, they are, what they were, what they're, my understanding.
Because that's what it says here.
Is that they wanted to, um, over the course of three years, they were asking you all to increase, as long as the committee allocation stayed whole, they were asking you all to increase the allocation by a certain amount, which I forget what that amount is right now, it's in this paperwork.
They wanted to get three seventy-five or a line item.
Right, they want you to increase it by that amount as a line item so that they, um, can dedicate that amount to the clean and safe. And so we were just presenting this as an option to you, that if you went ahead with the surplus funds for the first year only and get them to that level through the surplus funding, then when the committee met, then they would hopefully sustain them at the level, if that's what their request is. I mean, I agree with you, and I asked all of these groups to explain to you, you know, what are you getting for allocating the additional money, like a budget for clean and safe, like what will it really, what will it actually accomplish? And I think they have that, but we weren't trying to get, without them being here to present it themselves, we have staffed and want to speak for them. But that's the gist of what they've explained they'd like to do. And I think there should be a letter from the Vista Guild, if it's not in here, we sent it to you all.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I I just, I'm reading what's here, and it clearly says it's starting eighteen nineteen, so I don't know why we'd be taking out a surplus. I mean, I understand your theory.
I'd get it to him next year.
Creating that level, but one of, one of the things that we said in the beginning of the budget last year when we did this is that we need to be putting some money away in that account. And right now, we're getting ready to spend it all. I mean, any time somebody hears there's a penny in that account, there's a request in here.
Exactly.
There is, and we just.
I've got a question, do we have? Uh, do, do we get a, a, a budget? I know we see mostly a a letter or a memo that comes requesting something, but do we get a budget showing where the dollars are going?
The committee sees all of that.
They do, we do.
I'd like to see it, uh, those three.
Those three, the budgets for those three.
Right.
DeeDee, in addition to that, excuse me, but in addition to that, is there any way we can see what you got on hand before you grant it? What's, what's the balance?
What Teresa just said.
That would be a.
Did I miss that?
Well, the total was seven eighty, last week, we approved one twenty.
No, no, no.
As far as the surplus or in?
No, I'm talking about the the organization. I'm not talking about that seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Say for an example, you've got a group, and they've asked for X number of dollars, how much money do they have in the bank?
We receive their, um, financials and their nine ninety and all of that information when they complete the application. Um, we also receive an update throughout the year, so we do have that on hand.
Can we include that as a part of that figure, uh, Mr. Davis's request? I'd certainly like to know what's in the pot before you put something in the pot.
Yes, sir.
There are pots, yeah. I'm sorry, you want to know, you want to know what their, what their balance sheet is?
And I think one thing that will hopefully be helpful to you all, that DeeDee's, you know, already been working on, but it has the capacity to do more. DeeDee, why don't you explain the Zoom grants functionality to council, because they should be able to pull up a lot of this information going forward.
Um, as you know, we went electronic the previous year with Zoom grants, and, um, that has their applications along with all of their financials, their nine ninety that are required to submit. Um, all of that is online and accessible to you all for your viewing. It will show what they were funded, it will show their budget. It, all of the questions we ask on the application, the number of tourists, um, the attendance that they had, all of that is available, and it will also produce spreadsheets, um, for you to compare information, um, whenever you have questions.
DeeDee, um, it might be helpful, I'm not sure if we need it today or or tonight, um, but prospectively, well, maybe identifying four or five data points would always be helpful to have. I mean, obviously, I don't want to judge an organization because they've been good stewards and and judge them negatively because they have a balance sheet. That's, that's, that's a good thing. Um, but it might be helpful to have four or five data points, maybe, uh, what, what, you know, what what their annual budget is, what the balance sheet, with with with, uh, much cash on hand they might have, uh, uh, maybe if if it's tourism impact or what have you. I mean, it it probably wouldn't hurt, uh, to have those numbers kind of going forward, but not, I, I think, but I think well, just to go online and 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 pull up this spreadsheet and try to dial into different information, let's just make sure, whatever was happening to be, let's make sure we have those available in in the future.
Yes, any, any of that that you need, I could pull it as well and provide it.
Yeah.
And then if you were, um, remotely somewhere that you needed something, you could also go in there, but I can pull anything that you need as well.
Yeah, I think, I think we'd probably just give you some direction, three, four, five points that might be helpful.
Yes, sir.
Make decisions, and usually we won't make a whole lot of decisions, I mean, ninety-five percent of everything is decided by the committee, usually anyway, and, uh, uh, Mr. Devine.
First, you know, what have you thought of?
Not about the clean and safe, but to Daniel's point, I I would agree that we need to keep some money to carry over or just some when we have, sometimes we have things that come up that we didn't, we weren't aware of that we need to fund. So I wholeheartedly agree with that concept. From my butt to that is.
I knew it was coming.
But, um, you know, there are, sometimes there are groups that even when the committee comes and we approve the committee's recommendation, we know, well, what the committee approves for them is not something they're going to be able to do their event on. Case in point, you know, one we approved last week, Auntie Karen, we knew the amount she got, there was no way that she was going to be able to do that event, that's why last year she actually didn't do the event. Um, but she, you know, wanted to bring it back, and from what I hear, it was a huge, huge success. So, um, you know, I I say that to say that there are some times that, and I know Howard has a proposal that we've talked about for over a year, but we haven't put it in place, and maybe this is the year to do it for the eighteen nineteen year. But there are some groups that traditionally, we know that the committee, um, based on what they have and what they want to see, um, has, you know, gives them, grants them a certain amount of money, but we as council know it's a good event, and we know that that's not enough, and we might need to look at that. With that said, what I want to put on the table, and I, I, DeeDee, you gave me this, and I don't know, what did Black Pages get through the committee process? Is that fifteen?
Let's see.
While she's looking at that, I I had DeeDee pull for me the last ten years of funding, um, and traditionally, with the exception of two years where they got twenty-five thousand and one year they got thirty thousand, the the lowest amount that we traditionally have funded Black Pages is fifty to put on that event. We've given them as much as eighty in years past, and so I would like to get them back to that fifty in order to do that event.
Um, they were given twenty-five thousand, that is with what council added. That's with what council and committee together was twenty-five.
Twenty-five, so there would be an additional twenty-five minutes.
Can I put sidebar to your conversation? You know, one of the things that we talked about years ago, and we we said is that, you know, th-this money's not supposed to be for groups forever and ever. When do we start weeding people? I mean, I think that's what the committee has been doing, is trying to weed down so that they can bring in other people. And, you know, this isn't directed at any individual, but, you know, you just, it seems like the same groups, and, you know, I think Annie Karen's a great example, I mean, not that, I I shouldn't say a great example, but she didn't, she didn't do an event, but she still survived, you know? And granted, the event went really well, and I'm excited for her because I think, yeah, I mean, well, it's, you know, I guess it's just, at some point, how do we help use the money to continue to grow, you know? It's a struggle because you go back and forth, and and we've talked about it, saying there's, there hadn't been a rhyme or reason, you know, but I was looking at it, because at one point, there was a proposal from the hospitality districts, if y'all remember, that said, we ought to get fifty percent of what we collect. You know, um, that means Harbison's going to get about a million something this year, but, but, you know, I, I, I'm try, there.
Yeah.
I I hear Sam, because there's a lot of people calling me going, you know, we, we don't ever get anything, we never get anything. And they're not asking for arm and legs.
And that's what we tried to do last year, I mean, we, you know, I've heard great things about, um, I can't even think of what it's called, but a couple of the new groups that we funded last year, I've heard some really good things, and they just wanted an opportunity. I think it's a hard, it's it's hard because what happens is, you know, not to, you know, pinpoint anybody, because as the mayor said, you know, you don't want to make them a victim of their own success.
Right.
But we've talked about that, if you take that whole philosophy, then you get to the point, and I think the committee did try and do that one year, then you do have the Five Points Vista and and city center partnership, and people are like, okay, you know, or the museum, you know, and people are like, well, that, you know, they get a huge amount, when do you start dwindling them down? Well, if you dwindle them down, then are they able to? Well, if you dwindle them down, then are they able to continue doing the events and doing things that actually bring people in?
But, but to say, but to say that, I do think that we need to take a deeper dive. Because when somebody gets to a certain point where they're able, because their other revenues and, and are, are really good, you know, at what point do you say, well, wait a minute? You know, we're funding you three hundred thousand dollars a year, but you've got a director making a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year and you've got seven hundred thousand dollars in the bank? You start to go, whoa, whoa, wait, wait a minute here. You know, how do, how do, how do we balance that out? I think that's going to be a discussion we're going to have this budget.
Mr. Davis, Ms. McDowell.
The point I'm, I'm really trying to make is that I, I, I do go back to, I think the best philosophy we've ever had on that, and that is that at some point, we are, we have expectations of the organizations. And that is that they are, they reach a, almost reach a point of independence or dependence on, on this pot of money. Or they can recycle at some point. You know, you get off and you come back on at some point. But you still have those organizations in line. They have a good product, but for some reason, they can't make it through that committee process. You know, and it's, so they, they, you never see the real growth in that that you want to see. What, what tends to happen is the larger organizations grow and grow and grow. The smaller organizations, they can't get on the food, on the food, in the food chain. And, and that, I think that's a legitimate argument. Because some of them are also coming from parts of this city that, you know, if we want to continue to sell the city as a whole, then we've got to help attract people to other parts of the city also.
Why can't there be a fresh, clean kind of approach? And the approach, of course, sort of lends itself to, it seems to me that when we give hospitality tax dollars, there ought to be something. DeeDee, what's the?
Yes, sir.
And, and you're, you're, you're new to this. What's, what's the accountability? What's the accountability factor that's included? When you give hospitality tax dollars?
Yes, sir.
What's the accountability to us? You give, you give someone a pot of money and you would hope that they've got reserve, they got funds in the bank that will sort of help augment their budget. Hospitality tax dollars, from what I understand, sort of feeds itself through whatever is given. And at the end of the year, or at the end of this thing, it's, you've got zero in the bank. What's, what's the accountability issue?
I'm going to let, John, do you want to come up and speak a little bit on the, on what we? Is that okay? I've seen the ins and outs for about thirteen years with the grants. And I think the committee does a good job of evaluating the same points that you, that you all do bring up. But I'll let John speak just for a minute about that.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity. I didn't really anticipate that I would be up here. But there are some things that, that the committee has always, as long as I've been involved with it, been very concerned with. And that's spreading the dollar around the community and not giving it in a way that we quantified in any way. Some of, and most of the small organizations get money based, not on the numbers of people they bring in, in view of the committee, but how it enriches the community and how we can spread that money around the community to recognize the diversity of the community itself. So we consider it an enrichment, a community enrichment project. And the hospitality tax dollars, as I understand it, and as I think many members of the committee understand it, were put in place to guarantee to the arts community a steady funding source. And it has been doing that since its inception. One of the other things the H-Tax Committee has been doing has been looking at organizations which are funded, which are doing a splendid and remarkable job, and then looking at activities that those organizations might fund. For example, the Auntie Karen organization never came to the, before the committee for money to fund the organization itself, but did come for the event, Legends, several times. And the reason that it got less money each time for Legends is because we did look at the revenues that that activity itself was able to generate. And it kept growing and growing and growing, but it was limited by the facility. It could only sell so many tickets. So the committee looked, how can we supplement what they need? Not give them everything they do need, but help them. And I think that's the way we look at most of the organizations, particularly those that are the smaller organizations. Because to get their foot in the door, they need a lot of help. Particularly now that the, the, everything is electronic. Not everybody has access to a computer. We may think it's easy to get to the library or wherever, but some of the small organizations really need a lot of help. And I know that I, as a committee member and other committee members, have been able to go and talk to people and help them to develop their applications as they present them. And have suggested to them on and on and over and over that they not just ask for the specific activity that they might do, like the Cornbread Festival, but they ask us to help them for the Maine, North Maine Business Association as a district, as a hospitality district, and direct your grant application in that way. So there are just so many different things that we, as a committee, look at before we present it to you. And as DeeDee had said, everything is a spreadsheet there for you to see. Are there any other questions you might have? Yes, sir.
Well, John, I, I have a proposal that I'm trying to get the council to talk about this afternoon. And it's based on the proposal that you sent to the mayor several years ago. And it, I think it would take care of some of the concerns of the council.
Well, I, I remember basics of what I did send to Mayor Benjamin.
I remember basics of it too.
And that was, right at the beginning.
Also.
The, the line items were the buildings that you owned or that you had contracts with, or you had a statutory obligation to. Like the museum, Adventure, Historic Columbia, Columbia Music Festival Association. Those would be your specific line items. Then the next ones down from them would be activities or organizations that specifically were seen as economic engines for the community, like Famously Hot, like Black Pages, and so on. And then those would be funded directly by council and come out of the competitive process. And then I even suggested and put in that suggestion years ago that we consider Harbison as a hospitality district and look at hospitality districts specifically different. So I, I think that's the direction that in talking to Mr. Duval, he was talking about going. But even looking at the hospitality districts, when they come before committee, they come not just for Clean and Safe, but for their general operations. And that's why this year, the committee decided to put both requests together because there was absolutely no way that it could be funded at the level they needed, eight or nine hundred thousand dollars for each of those three districts. So our determination was, let's put it back in the hands of their effective boards of directors and let them see how that money can be spread around and best used.
Well, John, you've more or less outlined what, what I have a proposal. I'll give you a copy of it so you can have it up there if you want.
Yeah, yeah, the.
That's the one we looked at before?
You can pass them out.
This is what I sent last night.
It's a bit of, that's a bit of a variation. Has that changed a little bit over the last couple of years? Daniel's in the room. You know, as we, a couple of really, several, actually really good points raised here. And obviously, having a, keeping a nest egg for whatever may come ought to be a part of it. The proposal, the list of, of items on, that the city manager cobbled together for us based on requests, previous requests, and, and some that we actually gave her as well, and some, at least one urgent pressing need on there. We're going to have to go ahead and take them up. And I, I would tell you, I'm prepared to take up several of them, if not all of them, tonight. The newer list, we can, we can choose to look at some of those as well. I know I sent you the one on Sally Salamander, for example. The, uh, we've got a, am I no recommend what? On the same page? The, um, let's, let's recognize the fact, this is a human process, okay?
Yeah.
This, this, this is a, this is a human process with, with shifting priorities and, and shifting value associated with different types of events. But you know, one citizen committee may, may think that festivals or, or, or runs are valuable and, and another, but next year, they might not think that's the case. Some are looking for real, you know, economic impact that affects not just general body, but also how it drives H-Tax, you know, into the, in the community. I think, I will say, I think the, the connection between events, most of the events, I would dare say, and driving more H-Tax dollars or A-Tax dollars is, 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 is more tenuous than we might suggest. I think, I think we're, we're, we're talking about ways in which we're using these resources to try and, and improve quality of life. That's what we're talking about. How are we, how are we creating experiences? How are we adding to the experience of everyday Colombians and those who come to visit with us? So I think, let's, let's, let's make that, that clear. I think there is a, a, a real discussion to be had about organizations that we ought to support for the long term and whether or not that, that amount stays the same over a period of time or if it, or if it changes. And, and as, as organizations become, become more mature and healthier and have stronger balance sheets, and, and let's think about that. The same discussion we're talking about, Ed, around Warden Sewer. You know, there, there's always an under, an undercurrent around equity and, and inclusion. And, and wanting to make sure everyone has a seat at the table, wanting, talking about innovation and, and making sure that, again, that this human process that we defer significantly to a, a group of dutiful and committed citizens and are thankful for, for their work, that, 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 again, it's a human process. At, at times, we are, we are sympathetic and we agree one hundred percent in everything else. And other times, we don't. And, and a small portion of those funds will invariably come back to this council. And, and, and we had, we can decide we're going to shift it back, send it back to the committee, or we can decide to make our own decisions. Which, and I, I've always been of an opinion that, that, that it's our prerogative and not just our prerogative, but our responsibility. That if we, if there's some decisions that we think are in the long term, best interest of the city, this council ought to go ahead and, and exercise its, its authority to do so. I, I feel strongly that, that new organizations, upstart organizations, organizations that may not be in the, in the, in the central business district of one of our core entertainment districts ought to be given strong consideration as well. I, I think we, I think we've got to talk about inclusion, we've got to talk about equity, we've got to talk about quality of life. I think we've got to talk about innovation and, and those organizations that are really getting up and, up and running and thinking about ways to do things very creatively. We should pay some attention to it. But that's a decision that I, I really want us to make. And I'm fine with leaving a significant amount of money in, in the, in, in the pot. I think it gives us the latitude to, to, to make some decisions kind of as, as we go forward. But I'm, I'm, I'm eager to move forward on some of these issues. If in fact, the, we got to get some clarity, someone's got to get some clarity for the night on what the Vista Guild's request and, and need is. It, it is FY eighteen, nineteen?
Yeah, and it's on, it's on the letter that you all originally had. And then Missy just gave you the exact letter with the letter inside of it the last time. If you look at our footnote, it really explains it. I forgot our footnote was out there.
They want three-year funding guarantees starting eighteen, nineteen.
So that gives us, that gives us some more, some more latitude as we look at these numbers as well. But, but some of these, I mean, there's one urgent need I think we're going to have to address. I know that several of us have made different commitments, that, of things we would advocate for. I've made some, are taken on this list and I'm prepared to report on them tonight. But not all of these. We're going to spend some time working through it, thinking about how we do things long term. Let's take up either Chairman John's proposal or a version thereof. I'm not sure if it's tonight, I think we need to talk about it a little more. But let's take it up sometime in the very near future so it can guide things going forward.
It's not a great departure from the procedures that we have going right now. It just cleans up the administration of it and greatly simplifies the administration of H-Tax. And it does create three different, four different groups. The first group would be the big, big people, a hundred thousand and above or some, some figure like that that get continuous funding, have gotten continuous funding. It will allow them.
Why, why, why is that, why a hundred threshold?
I put that in there because that's what Andy Smith suggested. I'm not with the hundred thousand and might, and DeeDee's going to get some information to find out where.
And as DeeDee, she's going to say something, but she moves into her role in, in helping us guide this, particularly giving us ideas and policy as well. But remember, we're also going through the Amplify process. I mean, you know, so we're, we're developing a cultural plan for, for the city and, and the region. I mean, we, we, let's spend some more time on, on this to make sure we do it and do it right. In terms of timing, I mean, is it, is it, I guess, is it die cast for eighteen, nineteen? If we've been through the process already? You guys are done meeting, right?
Yes, we've met for, we will meet for eighteen, nineteen funds.
Their applications are, are coming in now.
I thought I heard someone earlier say that. I thought that was early, I thought you guys were incredibly efficient.
For Sam, I was asking for this current year. They've already met, when he was saying when this.
Okay, okay, so for, for the year that we're halfway in. I got you, eighteen, nineteen. So we can potentially guide this year's process, eighteen, nineteen.
Come out of that pot.
I, I would like, I'd love to hear.
She does need to have the opportunity.
Yeah, I'd love to hear more from. Yeah, I'd love to hear more from DeeDee. I'd love, I'd love to, I mean, if we're, if we're supporting, as we are financially, the, the development of the cultural plan. I mean, I think this obviously fits into, into that discussion. I've never, when Daniel always goes to it, but Sam repeatedly goes to Harbison, I've never been not supportive, as to use my double negative, of sending more resources out there, but, but I, but I'd much more be, I'm much more interested and supportive of, of, of the traditional boundaries. So let's, let's spend some more time talking about it. You guys say something, DeeDee and then Howard? Do you have something to say?
I just put together a few notes, but I would like to put it together further and have something that we could all look at based on seventeen, eighteen funds and how it will look into what Councilman Duval has proposed.
And what source of funds? Do we just have, so many organizations didn't take down? Did we just have a bump that we didn't expect at the end of last year? What, why, why do we have six hundred and forty-three thousand available? Just, just a robust, a robust, a robust year?
You think the eclipse?
Eclipse?
I guess I don't know.
Eclipse is this year.
Eclipse is in the current year, so that won't reflect in the numbers.
So what's, what's, what's about?
One of the things that occurs in H-Tax, and it's the struggle that we have when we make the projections, is we get larger, our months with the collections are larger in the spring, so it's occurring in the end of the year. Take a look at the, the numbers that Jan provided y'all for, for November. I've actually already looked at December and January. Right now, we're just barely on budget. And it's the same thing as we were last year. But as we roll up in April, May, June, assuming things continue the way they have the last few years, we'll end up having collections that'll be higher. And then that always creates a surplus. Y'all may recall, two years ago, y'all actually approved us before we gave you the surplus because we just assumed we would have that surplus in, in August. So it's, I, I anticipate it'll be the same thing. You know, at the end of this year, we'll have a surplus, assuming that the spring goes similar to the last several springs.
And we're getting more restaurants and other, I mean, I think.
And, and we've also had a gra, well, I won't say it's aggressive growth, but we have put growth in the last several years of three to five percent in the, in, in, in the budgets. So we anticipated that we were going to have growth from the eclipse. So that was put in the current budget that we're in right now.
So that'll be good, hopefully. But we always recommend you all, a little pushing, so.
Mr. Duval?
Mr. Mayor, just give me five minutes to run through this thing one time. If y'all will pay attention, I think you will like what, what it said. And I think it will simplify the whole process.
Howard, you're assuming a whole lot.
You're assuming a great deal.
I am a great salesperson.
I can tell by the two hundred people I talked to this morning. I can tell by the 200 people I talked to this morning.
Okay, what this does is build on what John has, has given the mayor and, and to me and from other things. And it also is a result of a conversation I had with Margie Reese, who is doing the cultural study Amplify, for Amplify. We had at lunch and she made a good suggestion for this thing. But this sets up four groups in the H tax. The first group is, are the big people that have been traditionally getting funding. It's the groups that we have their 990 on file, they ordered the financials on file. And the $100,000 figure was just something that Andy suggested is being able to tell whether you were in the big group or not. But I'm not wed to that figure. We can do 75, we can do 50, or we can do no. We can just appoint them.
I would, I would say higher than lower.
Okay, well, DeeDee is going to do some research and give us a look of what, what they are. But we would, they would also have to be a 501(c)(3). The, the big thing here is that we would sign a, a contract with the group rather than them sending in the gas receipts, the, the salary receipts and all that other stuff. We would sign a contract with the cultural group. It'd be a cultural contract that they would provide us with X specified services for the year in return for our contribution of X number of dollars. This is the way Margie says that other cities handle this so that they don't get bogged down in receipts and this sort of stuff. That it's just like us contracting to build a water tank. We come up with a $4 million water tank, we sign a contract with Duval Construction, and when the water tank is built, we give them the-
Better not call Judge Mullin.
So what kind of services are you talking about?
Well, see, this is what I worry about, Howard. And I'll give you an example. There was a period of time where people were taking out ads with each other to share hospitality money in their programs, which is not allowed. And that's the kind, if you don't have-
What do you mean ads?
So, so your organization would buy an ad from me and I'd buy an ad from you and we would keep the money.
And that is something we monitor currently when it comes through.
That's my concern, you can't-
With this funding arrangement you're describing now, they would be subject to audit, right?
They would all be subject to audit.
All groups.
All groups would be subject to audit. And this thing is now-
The issue that I have, Howard, and, and I know you gotta get through this, to think about perhaps either lowering that $100,000.
I'm, I'm not wed to the $100,000. That was just a suggestion and, and we will look at the thing. The second group are the smaller groups, the ones that have fiscal agents that, that need some help. They would also have to have 501(c)(3) status, they would have financial audits. They are the ones that the committee would have to probably do a little hold, handholding on. The third group is what I call the Sam Davis group. This is the, a pot of money that would be set aside for innovative, smaller groups that are coming into the market for the first time, that want a, a foothold and get their foot, foot in the door. And so we would set aside money that would be used for that. And the fourth group is capital projects. It would be, we've, I think we've got around $500,000 floating around in capital project right now. And I think that we ought to take that $500,000 and make it a capital projects fund. The committee could help us prioritize which groups get it. So if Trustus Theater was next up to get X number of dollars that the council approves, then we would know that as Nickelodeon and CMA roll off of their use of $100,000 a year, it could be given to other-
Wasn't there discussion around capital projects about what, whether we could support capital projects and buildings that we didn't own?
We can.
Okay, is that, we can?
Yeah. As long as they're tourism related, as long as they're bringing in tourism projects, we can support it. So th- those are the four pots that I have. The, the big change would be the contract so that we wouldn't have to get bogged down in all the bookkeeping that we've been bogged down in for other, other things. And I forgot one thing, in the, in the top group, the top group would have multi-year funding. You would, you would say it's ju, you would have two years and Jeff, I can't remember exactly what the wording you sent. Subject to appropriation by council. What I envision this to be is, is the way cities that do multi-year budgets do. You approve two years of budget, but you true up the second one every year. So you actually got two years rolling each, each time. A lot of these groups like Nickelodeon and, and others need to be assured that they're gonna get funded for the next year so that they can plan 12, 18 months ahead of time. And this would allow them to, to do that planning.
So nobody never really spins off from the trough?
Well, that'd be up to the committee. The committee would review it each year. If, if they think it needs to be coming down, then, then they can set that as they true up each year.
Conceptually, I, I don't think it's a bad idea. I, I have to tell you though, I'm completely concerned about a contract. I don't believe that is the way to go. And it just, it is a license for people to manipulate the system. Not saying any of these groups are gonna do it, but it opens up a door that you cannot close and it specifically-
We can toe away with it.
Howard, I think you probably ought to hear about some of the things that we've seen and done and, and that are in there so that you understand fully. But I, I don't think that for accountability standpoint, having a contract like that, that's, that's a no for me.
But you, you've had a contract with hundreds of people for the city of Columbia and you don't worry about them, but you're gonna worry about 200,000?
Oh, wait a minute, but what does the hospitality rules mean? You have to turn in reimbursables, it's not a blank check.
It does not say that.
Yes, it does.
It does not.
It does.
Not the state law, the local, the local-
Doesn't matter, it's our law, that's what we passed and sold to the public, you can't go back-
We can change that.
I think your biggest example, and we went through this as a council, Mr. Duval, would probably be One Columbia. I mean, that, but that was determined, that that was a, um, like an arm of, or they were providing a service. That whole discussion that was had about One Columbia took, you know, legal review, et cetera, for us to get to the point to do that contract with them when we're paying them on a quarterly basis. And we go through that with them every year. You know, Lee provides the, um, direction that they are going each year and the deliverables that we would expect. But that's, to me, a, a bigger or broader concept of amplifying, probably of spinoff now with Amplify Columbia Plan because they're a big part, you know, working with One Columbia. So to say that a group would, I'm not, I'm, I'm just giving my general thoughts. I haven't looked at this, but I think that we'd have to be real careful about what are we saying the deliverables are to the city of Columbia? Like what service are they providing, um, the city? With One Columbia, there are certain services, but for us, having them, we as city staff, you know, wouldn't be doing ourselves.
Well, you look through the list that we have that we're funding now, you can think of off the top of your head the deliverables that most of these agencies would have, especially the ones that would be in the top tier.
I can name one off the top tier that presented us their financial thing. And if you read it, they made $250,000 when they told us they couldn't survive without it, but their net income was $250,000. And there was no direct real accountability of it, other than the only part of it was the $50,000 that we gave that they said that they were gonna go broke if they didn't get the $50,000, but yet they netted 250,000. Where'd it go? When you turn something like that, you open the door. Now, conceptually, what you're putting together makes sense. But put some, don't give away the accountability piece.
Well, what would you suggest that we do?
The same thing, if you wanna commit to a two-year, you can do a two-year commitment, that's, that's not an issue.
We can still do the structure, what-
They still need to supply everything to-
To staff, the backup so that we can verify that.
I, I think it's ridiculous for us to make these people give receipts for gas and electric-
They're not supposed to be using it for gas.
They can use it for gas if you, if that is-
Obviously, obviously, we need to spend a little bit QT on this. I'm, I'm gonna wrap this one up pretty, pretty soon. But, but I think just fundamental understanding philosophy. I, obviously, there's, there, there is some real interest in pursuing much more efficiency in the process, a much more inclusive approach, equitable distribution to, uh, organizations that are anchors and I dare say even crown jewels of, of, of our, of our cultural infrastructure. Also making sure some other organizations get an opportunity to also rise up to that, that, that status. But making sure that, that we have a system that's accountable, because obviously we, we, there's only a limited amount of dollars that go around. It's growing, thank God, but a limited amount. So I, 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 I'm not sure if we spent, if, if we planned, if we appropriated the time to have a full philosophical discussion on H tax, which always gets really spirited. Like, my sense is there's, there's a, there's a sense among the body, we gotta do something. But I thought, when you said you needed some time, I thought we were gonna walk through this list or we're gonna spend some time talking through this list, so we can at least have some consensus as to how we move forward tonight. Unless it, no, work session is definitely the time, whether or not work session on February 20th is the time is, is, is what, is what my concern was.
I'm talking about the transition between CVB to-
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. But we, but we, but we still, I'd, I'd like to hear from DeeDee. We have not yet heard from DeeDee.
I was just gonna, I'm looking at the list, I was gonna ask, and I'd like that they've raised their own money. Can you remind us what, what's the Sally Salamander? I know it was the-
Yeah, this, this is expansion. So it's been maybe a decade ago, Leadership Columbia. Uh, one of their class projects was, uh, have interactive wayfinding walking tour of historic sites, historic and public art sites throughout downtown. They, it's, it's, it's gotten old. This, there was a proposal that the students from Heathrow Hall made to us in which they, um, they would expand the, the walking tour, 10 additional sites replaced if Salamanders are missing. You guys have probably seen some of them, there's one in front of the museum of art, one, uh- Yeah, they are collectors, I gotta make sure they're fixed really tight. Uh, there's one at, um, right across the street from me that, that Never Bus, Blue Skies, Public Art as well. This would expand it by 10 different sites. I'm sure, I think you were at the meeting, they went through the entire process with us. This would add, um, this would purchase also some collectibles for people actually to buy and not steal off the, off the wall. Would add an, an app for, for folks to be able to use. They've been working with the CVB and, and, and other stakeholders there. This, um, additional funding complements about $4,000, they've already raised.
They raised $4,000.
They raised, they raised $4,000, they raised $4,000. This would complement that effort, so, yeah. It's a good look. All right, um, y'all wanna go through this? Deal with it? I, I am, I'm fine with the, uh, with the, with the-
Do we just, do we settle on a time to address this? Because I think we need to put it on the calendar.
I'd, I'd, when you guys set to meet, John, did John leave? There's, when, when y'all set to meet?
It depends on when the applications are ready or the application is ready.
Usually it's in May.
We got, so we got time, we got, we got time, I'd, I'd rather-
The applications will be due at the end of March, so we will have everything for that year then.
I'd, I'd rather wait at least until mid-April for us to, I just want you here. So for us to have that, that discussion.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, six one-way half does another, if you guys wanna go ahead. But they're not meeting until May, they're not meeting until May.
Let's just, let's make sure that everybody's here.
We got some time to lay out, to lay out the ground rules. So, uh, so we can make it April, not, we won't be talking about anything else. Just joking, talking about a whole lot. The, um, yes, let's set this for in April. Not that you haven't been doing this for a long time, but you really have your feet up under you by then. We'll have a, a pretty good look, maybe even a, a good, um, look at, at the requests as well, by then the applications by then.
He's off to a great start, really. I think that'll give DeeDee some time to put some things together for you.
I put together a little bit, but I'd like a little more time to go through, you know, what we have. And then, of course, the new ones that we received.
Yes, ma'am, all right. The, uh, your list you provided today, Theresa?
Yes.
Sorry, I've got a lot of paper here today, I'm sorry. So Cinca de Maya, obviously, is, is this fiscal year. Five Points Request is, is for 18-19, all right? Is that there?
You mean the wine?
The Food and Wine Festival would be for the current year.
Clean and Safe, Clean and Safe.
It's for next year.
Yeah, so I assume, are they submitting through the process as well?
Yes, they will submit their normal, um, annual application for the 18-19 funding for Clean and Safe and for, um, their normal application.
I'll just go ahead and be transparent, tell you guys where I am on this, on this list, so we can get the conversation started at least. Um, I think the urgent need, arts and rec, that staff is laid out. Sorry?
Approved.
Are we, are we, those two, right? We did those two, so we take, we take that off and that off, so we also change that number. At least as anticipated, five, 523. If we take, um, 18-19 off for Clean and Safe, Vista Gil. But I, I am prepared to, to, to include in our motion night that we're committing to the 18-19 allocation and, and two successive years. I mean, I just, I, I, I want that off the table. I think we made it, you got something, DeeDee? You gonna say something?
Go ahead.
Okay. The, um, I'm, I support security cameras in the Hosteller District, since we have to, we have to have them. I support the Ambassador Program, that is a 17-18 request, not a 18-19 request. Obviously, truing up on, on the Capital City Classic, that, that is, um, important and we gotta get ready for the, the basketball tournament. Support the firefighters and the sports council, um, obviously, you know, it's Miss South Carolina pageant as well as the, um, one of the largest, if not the largest tourist event we have in the city every year.
Is that what the Regional Sports Council?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I support the Girl Scouts. I think, I think the, I think the amount of, of, of children, their families, uh, uh, that will come here as a result of that commitment, um, is, is huge. And this is a-
Is that a one-time request?
It's a one-time, it's a one-time request. I, I haven't had a chance to digest these others except for the Food and Wine Festival. Uh, and, and of course, and of course, Salamanders articulated earlier, and I'm fine with the rest of those. If someone wants to speak about the others.
I wanna add Black Pages for 25. Black Expo, I mean.
Jeff, you and Jan, somebody said take, take, take in count?
What now?
Is there somebody taking count?
Well, Missy, can you-
We're trying.
All right.
They got it.
But I, I'm familiar with, I'm familiar with the Language Buddies Foundation, I can support them, it's a modest request. I don't, I don't any, uh, much about the applications. And obviously support the Paman Opera, but I, I haven't seen that request either. I guess that ran the gauntlet in the committee and, uh, and didn't, um, I can always support them.
Roger would be up here tonight, too. Roger would be up here tonight, too. Palmetto Classic would be up here in the end tonight.
No, no, they'll, they'll be-
They'll come back, that's just, that's just to fill the gap.
Classic.
Can I give the contrast?
Uh, abso, absolutely.
Well, number one, I think we need to save this money and put it in the pot for the committee to have for the 18-19 application. So I don't support hardly any of these, but let me give you a couple of reasons. Number one, I think the $75,000 for the security cameras can wait until the committee meets and let the committee decide, decide that rather than taking it out of the pot already. The cleaning of Vista Gil, we've already decided to put that off to 18-19. The City Center Partnership Ambassador Program, I agree with Daniel, I don't think they should get an additional $40,000. They, they have a bid that is growing by leaps and bounds as we develop the main street of, of Columbia and they, they need to live on that.
And they're getting $260,000 of hospitality on top of that, and we contribute to that, too. So I mean, there's significant amount of money in that.
There's a lot of money that they, and that's one of the ones I think we need to start whinging down.
We make these arguments, that these arguments are consistent across organizations, too.
Oh, hey, don't worry.
I'm not trying to, you, you, but, but, let's make sure, let's make, let's make sure there's consistency.
Okay.
Don't worry.
The, um, the basketball tournament and the $75,000 for Regional Sports Count, I think that that needs to come out of the A tax for the experience Columbia. We should not be funding 150,000 out of H tax in addition to giving them 80% of all the A tax that's collected. So I, I think that that should not be coming out of the H tax. The State Firefighters Conference, $6,000, I, I don't oppose the Firefighters Conference, but we have lots of conferences in Columbia. I, I don't oppose the firefighters conference, but we have lots of conferences in Columbia, including the Municipal Association that was last week. And we would never have gotten any support out of the city of Columbia. I doubt it from many of the other people. Why should we give it to the firefighters?
Uh, this is a, this is a national conference. This is a national, a national conference.
Well, it's this, it's this, I think it's a state conference. But also our, by our chief and our team are, have an integral part in hosting the event. This is what has pretty much lured it away from the coast. I wanna say it's been there for years and years and years and this will be the first time. So they have a, um, from the opportunity to train on our rivers, they're gonna be doing that. So we felt like that was a little bit of a distinction because we're integrally.
I support that one, Howard. I think it's, uh.
And then the other one is the Girl Scouts. We, we talked about this two years ago and, and Danny Crowe came in and said the Girl Scouts were not a, an organization that could receive the A tax. And I think we ought to stick with that. And I don't think that reducing the, the contribution to a hundred and thirty thousand, um.
And I asked that last week, Howard, but I thought that what I was told is that this is a different request or something, that this is eligible. Is that right, Jean?
It is.
Why would it be eligible?
Well, I, it's a, it's a capital need, just like you were saying earlier. This is the same request that they made over the years. I think previous administrator committed to the site improvements around the facility. They've never occurred.
I think before they were asking for like capital for the.
This isn't the capital campaign. This is the site improvements.
Cause I, I, I agreed with that, Howard, because I thought it wasn't.
Yeah, the backup, the, we asked specific questions and those, those emails are in.
But Jean, you were saying that it is eligible because it's the site improvement?
Thank you, good man, you're a good man.
And then Howard, I also, I also think something in the letter said that I guess some of the approvals was also because of, I think, what D D R C was requesting or something. I think, did I read that correctly?
It's gonna help, it's gonna help with pedestrian activity and connectivity down in that, in that lower part of the vest as well.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the issues that we need to talk about at some point.
Sid, sid, sidewalks and, and other issues down there. Hey, um, so, and, and I would say that, that the things are, the items articulated earlier and those that we appropriated previously, and a couple of ones are mentioned on the list from today, still leaves three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in the tail. Okay, so we'll make sure it's clear. We're not exhausting resources.
Which ones did you articulate on this long new list?
Um, Language Buzz, Pemena Opera, Food and Wine Festival, and Sally Salamander.
How much is this?
Do we do the, uh.
This new list is.
We're not doing it now, so.
We're doing it tonight. We're doing it tonight.
The new list tonight? You did, what's, what, what were they again?
Language Buzz Foundation.
Is that Cinco de Mayo?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and, and I'm sorry, and I, uh, make that two ninety-five. And, and I'm sorry, I left, I left a.
Is that the Language Buzz?
Yeah, Language Buzz Foundation, Pemena Opera, the Five Points Food and Wine Festival, Sally Salamander, and, um, and the Black Expo.
And, and the previous list.
A Black Expo.
In the, in the previous, in the previous list, off the previous list, I'll, I'll, I'll say it one more time and maybe if you guys can help me type it up in something. Uh, the security cameras, the City Center Partnership, Pemena Classic, basketball tournament, firefighters, sports council, Girl Scouts. And then again, off the new list, Black Expo, twenty-five thousand, Language Buzz, Pemena Opera, Food and Wine Festival, Sally Salamander. And then, and then, again, that leaves just about, just about under three hundred thousand dollars. I can put that in a lock box. I'll go in a lock box if you want, I'm just joking.
Just put it on.
You can send it all to North Columbia if you want, or, or.
Hey, man, he's getting a, he's getting his own fund. You heard it, dude.
But, but.
Some people get bridges and roads, he's getting a fund.
Leaves a significant six-year fund, if, if you guys want, want. Now, now, let's just make sure philosophically, you know, and, and we've done it different ways, different times and, and that if we're going to use twenty seventeen, eighteen funds, the fund twenty eighteen, nineteen commitments, that, that eventually, unless, unless we continue to see significant growth there, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna hit a wall somewhere all, all the way. I mean, uh, is that fair, Mr., Mr. Palin? Okay. You're, you're, you're that bright red over there, I'm amazed. Um, the, um, so, but it still leaves three hundred thousand dollars in there. That's gonna be the motion tonight, um, and we'll, we'll kinda go from that point forward.
Madam City Manager, can we get that in, in one page?
Yes, sir, we're working on it for you. Yes, sir, we'll have that for you.
And at some point, can, I guess, we can set a date certain to talk about the proposal so that the committee knows what we're doing moving forward? Cause that will also affect the amount that the committee gets.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not with y'all on this one.
I knew you weren't, but that's fine. You're consistent.
Huh?
You're consistent.
It's just, I think we ought to hold back.
I'm not gonna go for it either.
Man, we were doing all for it before, now you.
I'm, I'm not. I don't think we ought to spend the money.
I, I think, um.
There's no eclipse this year.
Hey, last year this time, man, you were.
Exactly.
That was an August twenty-first event that was once in a lifetime and we had to get the money.
Uh, uh, last year, you had a, you had a shopping list, man.
Only one project. All right. Get paid dividend, we're gonna be going executive.
Yeah, we need to go ahead, cause I think there's some people waiting for us.
I'm not on your front, Tim. If I could, before you all make your motion, just a moment of personal privilege, so they try to catch staff while they're in the room. Ms. Chris Seeger's, whose phone is going off, I think, right on cue.
That's her stormtrooper.
Um, professional has been with us for five years. I don't know where the time goes. While she's, uh, while she's.
Chris?
Present, so five years. Thank you, Chris.
Five years, what?
Uh, much time well spent, I must say, with all the grants that brought to the city. So thank you, Chris. Thank you so much.
We've done this issue, right?
Yeah, I'm not with you there.
The, uh, I know, I understand. Wouldn't expect you to be.
Yeah, it seems like it's been more than five years, but it's been five, it was right when the, um, ARL plans and the, the stimulus was starting. That was right, isn't it, Chris? Five years?
It was.
Yeah, five years as an employee and then four years.
Contract, yeah, contract.
That's right.
Okay, that's. Well, we got, we did good.
That's right, Chris.
You brought in, you, you paid your, you, you earned your salary, didn't you?
Yeah.
She was grinding, she was grinding.
Didn't cost us nothing.
Mr. Mayor, during the motion period for your, um, executive session, if you could add two items for.
Yeah, um, so the mo- motion to go into executive session, and guys, I wanna at least recognize the two of our mayor's fellows in the back room.
Oh, good.
Ladies, ladies.
We had several.
Right, young superstar, superstar, superstars. We had a couple more here earlier. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I would also say that Columbia has led the way. Breaking news, the president has directed the Justice Department to ban bump stocks.
Hey.
Really?
Unanimous vote, y'all, of this council, right?
Yeah.
I spoke to the, uh, youth, I mean, uh, Coalition.
My son, I went with him this week to get it, to buy a, buy a. My husband Desmond, my son, you know, his wife. Going to her car.
That's awesome, y'all. All right, uh, we got, we got a motion, we're gonna make a motion. You got two, you got two additional items, Madam City Managing, sir?
Yes, I got them here.
All right, go for it.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to go into executive session to discuss, um, under seventy-eight-two prospective purchase of sale of, of real property, potential purchase of north, of property in North Columbia, potential property in Rosewood Community. Uh, I also should, would like to go into executive session for receipt of legal advice relating to a pending or threatened potential claim, uh, under seventy-eight-two. Um, the Larri Stricken Adal versus City of Columbia.
We're taking extended off cause Mike's in court.
Okay. A receipt of legal advice related to matters covered by attorney-client privilege pursuant to seventy-eight-two, extended hours permits for commercial establishment, railroad referendum, security measures, uh, discussion of matters related to proposed location or expansion of services to encourage location or expansion of industries or other businesses pursuant to seventy-eight-two, uh, sewer expansion fees, discussion of negotiations, instance, proposed contractual arrangements pursuant to seventy-eight-two, Capital City Stadium, Bull Street Development, Lower Richmond Sewer Agreement, Carolina Water, Heart Repairs, discussion of employment of an employee pursuant to seventy-eight-two.
Mr. Paul, I'm sorry, you did add the additional, the potential purchases.